Okay, at this time I'm going to call the order of the December twenty first, twenty twenty two, Poly and Trail Management Council meeting. Annual Amendment to Paying respects to the flag and Vice Chair, Rick Field. It's the daily location.
My allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. These states stand. Dear our true heavenly Father, we pray that you're teaching us and guide us during this meeting and be with our committee. Please comfort the remaining tourists in Peru and place them in your hands. Please help Poly and Trail continue to be a safe source for all our people to travel upon it, and we wish you all Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year. Lord's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will adjourn for all calls.
Ed Redfield, here. Bruce Pearson?
Here.
Tommy Steele? Eric Watley? Curtis Wright?
Here.
Jonathan Gold?
Here.
Mike McDonald here. Allison Kemp. Joe Norval against them. Translating to Linda Brand?
Here.
Citizen rep Kevin Green?
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I did hand out five items for council just to add to the discussion. The first one is an attorney response email back to her on some issues she had with the district lead to that's dated December nineteenth, twenty twenty two, on top of your handouts. Second one is from Aaron Watley responding to item eight A and the vault rusting update. That's December eighteenth. The third one that I had handed out is April twenty twenty two minutes to complement item ninety B on the agenda. Fourth one is amendment to the budget, the budget to work down twenty twenty two beginning audit of the project. The pack was one hundred and five thousand plus six hundred and one hundred and eleven thousand. That's updated for your review. And the last one is the resolution for the Ralcy Wilson debt application in response to the attorney's email. So those are the five items to council under the packet. Any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I want to take a motion to approve. Second, taking a motion by the counselor in the door, second by councilor to approve the agenda as presented. If you have a comment, if not on papers, from what I was saying, aye, aye, both. Okay, no motion carries. Under the consent agenda, twenty four members is the consent agenda for approval of the minutes from November sixteen, twenty twenty two, Treasury report, financial reports, front management report, and I have the chief of commerce membership dues, and also review the somewhat twenty twenty two, what we've done in twenty twenty two in an outlook somewhat of a goal type setup for some of the items to rush to twenty twenty three. So with that, what I want to do is kind of the chamber of commerce, in your packet that I handed out was the comment from the attorney wondering whether it was a lawful expenditure of monies to contribute to the chamber of commerce. I did respond back to the attorney that we do get inclusion in a direct way, who's paid in their expols, and attending different chambers of that. So in my opinion, it's a legal lawful expenditure of money. She was just concerned that you just can't stunt money without any type of attorney that supports it. So I guess going forward to these discussions further is parameters that we need to feel that we can contact our attorney for advice. And I'm pretty appreciative that she's looking at all four of us and this business expense must move forward and sort of turn number six inside. I don't know if you might want to review or all of the twenty twenty two or twenty three that was in the packet. So I'll open up the floor on that. A couple things also on the bills. As you slip in your packet, Treasury for our March challenge has taken out a hundred and fifty dollars short term CD. Took it out on, it's a ninety day CD. It's taken out on November eighth, recorded within the financial packet. Interest rate on that is three point three percent. It's a lot better than the rest of the property in your account. Thank you to him for that. Linda, do we have anything left on the gift cards from home people?
I'll give about a hundred and seventy one dollars right now.
That's pretty much done. That would pay for the pollinator garden?
That's what the pollinator garden, that money, the hundred and seventy one that's left will be used to buy annuals next year for the cards.
Okay, all right. And also what I found with Treasury for our indicated me that on a Chase card, if it's a repeat battery purchase, you don't accumulate the board points anymore.
Exactly.
So I'd like to check that out. You know, so it might be something for us to, it's got a lot on me, but it's.
It's a big asset.
We've done pretty good on our giving that. Okay, I'll open the floor for anything else on the consent agenda before we approve. So there's nothing further on, we're taking a motion to approve. I make a motion that we approve the November sixteenth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes as well as attorney report, who will the bills be paid at fifteen thousand, four hundred and two dollars and twenty seven cents for November twenty twenty two, and receive file of finance reports for November twenty twenty two, as well as the trail manager's report of December twenty twenty two, and the Oregon Chamber of Commerce twenty twenty three membership dues of a hundred and fifty five dollars, and finally the twenty twenty two review and twenty twenty three. Now, second. Taking motion by councilor and all, second by vice chair, Redfield, to approve the consent agenda as presented. You further comment, not Secretary McDonald from the police department.
Okay. Well, yes, for approval of the consent agenda, beginning with Andrew Pearson?
Yes.
Curtis Wright?
Yes.
Jonathan Gold?
Yes.
Mike McDonald?
Yes.
Joe Nor?
Yes.
Ed Redfield?
Yes.
Okay. No motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on now to the public comment, the public comment this time. Okay, hearing none. We're new on our agenda. Citizen rep report, Kevin, anything to report at the end of the year?
Head bill report.
Head report. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on unfinished business to item eight A, vault rusting update. In your packet, councilor's is the vault rusting update that I had at that time. Aaron Law been instrumental in giving us this far, so I asked him to decide an update. He was not going to be here today, so that's why you received that item as an addition thing that passed on early. What that says is he submitted the application to Health Department and as preliminary, Randy indicated to me today, they approve that application.
Correct. He will be ordering the vault rusting, I mean.
Yeah, and that's what it says here, when the application's going to be reviewed on for the year that I have this week, which I did. Once it's been issued, I will place the work in the restroom. I can place it by twelve thirty one twenty twenty two, which you should have handled by June July. So it's all like everything is working accordingly to plan. Get updated. It may not be on the agenda, but you just, council count. Do you think further on?
Glad to see that.
Moving on to the item eight B, homework and bridge structure report from O H M. In the packet, board members, it's a report from O H M. Shows the report back. The bottom line is the bridge structure. Where's that located?
There's a bridge.
Oh, mile three?
Mile three, and then Indian Bridge.
Yes, but the first one off.
It's mile three.
Mile three bridge, in your court has indicated that it's in very poor shape, that is eight and six.
Mile three? No, it's in good shape.
Okay, because I know it got sixes and sevens, and one of the others that they like to see is perform load ratings, understand superstructure, capacity to assess on, based on the construction materials. So with that, council is going to have to keep in mind how much it's going to cost to do, what the structure, bearing load, starting in the report, see what needs to be done for repairs on that structure itself.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. I have a question with the low rating. Is that something once it's done, we have to do again and again and again? Like we have to have certified every year and plaque put up on there or something? How does that?
I'm actually not quite sure how that works. I actually have to talk to somebody with a higher department than me. I do know that the F twenty four, Laredo Grand Bridge is renewed, that I don't know how this bridge would work. So we have to talk to O H M to figure out what they require, what they require.
Where is on with that one? It's an issue, but the second thing is there's a cost.
Right. There's always a cost.
Okay.
There's always a cost.
So sort of to that, to councilor Holt's point, does M D do legal role with bearing?
Yes, if you do not, if we do not, technically, M D owns the Larry Laredo Bridge. We don't care for that. Or not there on site.
So that looks like the issue on that structure itself. And I got a failure for ten rating. For that, going on to the next structure, which is one by the pink, all of the pink thing, I should say. The bottom line is no recommended look at this time. So it says at this time, probably if we decide to go through this, probably beneficial in the world once.
Cost. Did I cost? The county running over with my costing. While I know the experience, the county is trying to get half million dollars out of me for a small bridge.
Just for that, that infrastructure?
Just a small gravel road, a small bridge. It's a little bit creek, so I just have to lower the weight limits.
And you think for what we use trail for, your pedestrians and users, is it pretty safe?
Okay.
They need to rest rest rest.
I think for the culverts, it's really not indicated. Two pipe systems, that was a decision there. Yeah.
What's?
Excuse me.
Oh, we can refer that to our open carry plan, our Chris, and well, as well, and see what she recommends as far as what we should do with that. I know that at the last meeting she spoke about possibly, if those bridges need to be replaced, we asked to see this anyway. And if people going long enough until we give the grants, we'll replace it with time to do the resurfacing.
Maybe.
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 But, you know, they're dying, dying right now. Those bridges are safe. I mean, we had, you know, I did see the old one with their heavy equipment, dumping, I drive over them all the time, dumping. We have to change those old ones. There's sound.
I think I would suggest we're of the best interest of the trail that we find out what we have to do, if there's any requirements that, make sure we meet those requirements.
I will contact Chris more times to make sure that, and there's probably some way to build, kind of low that actually handles that directly. So we'll find out what it is, and I'll bring it back to the next meeting.
She's on topic twenty seven.
Yeah, so I'll bring it back to the Jane.
All right, so chair.
Yes, sir. So I know it's memorable meetings, talking about activity and those other contractors and how damages happen sometimes, we're not sure who it is. I suppose that's why this bridge has to be so strong, because you're allowing them to lower that part. Is there any way to restrict them from using some of those bridges if it gets to the point where you have to restrict the way down?
I would say yes.
And.
A couple posts.
Because that would, you know, they would have to go around. I didn't know if they had, it would be in our personal agreement, but if they have jurisdiction that you can't impeach them across the bridge or not.
Mile three is on Poly and Trail Company, so we.
It's not D N R.
No, it's not D N R. A bridge that Indian Trail is D N R property, and it's in our area of town respect. So that may be something different. But I, other bridges I'm looking at, and I just see if we need to go now, if we can take off and do.
And I think what those weight limits are because of the vehicle traffic. If you restrict vehicle traffic movement, I think that releases a lot of burden.
I'm not looking to question if you need to, the trade companies. So where do you want to take this, council?
I'm curious. In reading the material, it appears that only the bridge is the one that he's recommending that it be load tested. Now, the bridge's other comments indicate that those structures don't require anything right away. So maybe we could proceed to authorize load testing subject to receipt of a cost or direct to trail manager.
Chair. Actually, one gets.
Right. Do we need to load test? Do we know that in fact?
Yeah, that's what. Yes, that's the recommendation, right. In here.
I would just ask that for under, on the load test, these are not road right of way bridges that we're worried about. These are pedestrian and bicycle and stuff like that. I think that once we get the load test on here, I think you're right, that we can put a couple of boats just on the big vehicles so they can't get through. We don't, we won't inhibit anybody, a normal industrial traffic. And I don't think that, you know, those bridges have lasted how long for the railroads and everything. And we really have no business having a huge truck school that knows anyhow, you know.
Yeah, the courtesy of allowing them to do so would make us a great.
Correct.
And it's just on the side of my email to Aaron Watley today because I was curious when we got forty three thousand dollars, it was a pull for five calls, so I wanted one. And I asked Aaron to contact O H M to see if this could be finished because they all performed the service without one vote. That's why I put the call in the packet. So it was understanding, intention, what they have, five culverts that cross the Poly and Trail jurisdiction inspector. So with that, if we all, if it's ten culverts, we're doing them a smart, is it the subways? It does. So just waiting for feedback and see if we can get a boost on the cost, because the bill hasn't gotten paid yet. So just for, just for council's okay on that. Any further on this before Trail Manager Randall's office has some information? Okay, but now I'll move on to the business item nine A, installation for Lauren, is it Comey?
Comey. She was just here, and she gave me a check for the bench. And she did walk out there with Mr. Creer, who was the, it's one of his wife that had passed. And he walked out there, and they would really love to have a bench by Poly and Trail overhead sign on downtown. He walks up to the line, we really need a bench up here. So, and that's where we kind of suggested that we needed a bench. So if it's all right with the council, we'll proceed with the ordering, and as soon as it comes in, they are going to take custody of the bridge, they're going to work together, and I will assist, but they will do the installation of it.
Okay, so they're going to do the installation, they're going to form all the hard to be hard to be, they have, okay.
We're all set for that.
Is the bench, how she wants to take it back?
Well, Poly and Trail, since having, you know, the labor and the material, it'll probably be in March, maybe April, or maybe February, which is fine, we're not going to be digging up there until the front.
And it needs the bench policy?
Correct.
Or materializing, size wise and all that?
Correct.
All right. Any further questions from council? Now, there's a motion in the packet, appearing to want to use your own.
Make a motion, I vote to approve the books on six seven, four eight oh date of November the eleventh, twenty twenty two, Poly products, and authorize Poly and Trail management to let the brand purchase a picnic table from Poly Products in the amount of seven hundred and forty nine dollars and ninety nine cents, not through the installation. We can stop at that point, you know, the check.
Thank you.
Oh, the purchase of the bench is contingent on the seven forty nine amount being received from Lauren Comey, and positive in Poly and Trail management council revenue. But you already have the check. So you got to go to bank.
I'll second that motion. Okay, a motion by vice chair, Redfield, seconded by councilor Holt, to approve the purchase of the bench. And we have Lauren Comey for the questions. Now, the local, secretary of general, please.
For approval of the motion to purchase the bench, Curtis Wright?
Yes.
Jonathan Gold?
Yes.
Mike McDonald, yes. Joe Nor?
Yes.
Ed Redfield?
Yes.
Bruce Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, moving on to item nine B, wait till Memorial Coastphone request. It's the request, Randy Klustra. Okay, she submitted some emails, you know, to the packet, it's a little off, finished on this, the council with consideration. So at this time, Randy, I'm going to open the floor up to give, and I'm going to give the pass, council.
Hey. Hi. Thank you all for all that you've done for the trail. So as Ray was driving, you were able to see some of the imagery and slides that I had sent through.
Oh, we have, we just have one in the packet with a real small, showing a couple of projected locations.
Okay.
And we have those.
Great.
Other ones I do not have.
I can get, I have the house.
Okay. So I apologize if you don't have those.
Yeah, we have some, I think with the concept that we wanted to do a phone today or get potential approval, it is very different and somewhat out there, in that these visuals are more. So what, this is my mother-in-law, I'm Klustra, she's a Lake Orion resident, Tom, here's Jimmy. So, so yeah, we definitely enjoyed the Poly and Trail and absolutely love it. And just last year, Lady Sullivan, a Lake Orion resident as well, he passed away suddenly. He was, basically, the, 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 the old boat house in downtown Lake Orion. Does anyone hear about Lady Sullivan? Like James from Lake Orion. So very, you know, involved in the community. His daughter hosts, she was a Lake Orion high school, she is one of the queens, so very involved, great family. So the thought of my brother-in-law and the Klustra family have been friends with the Sullivan's for a long time in this community. And so we wanted to just simply take a rotary phone and hang it on the tree from the trail. And so this concept, this is a telephone with a wind, everybody was involved, Steve or somebody, so, right? This is probably the easiest one. But basically, the telephone with the wind, is a call that we wanted to hang with the Poly and Trail. We originally had proposed that about a year ago, April, it was Linda and Far and Pat Well, and they were working on a, basically, a trailhead project where they renovated, some believe, the area of Clarkston Road, Clarkston and Rose Road, I heard. And we had proposed putting the telephone there because that area was basically in memory of what, but at the time, there wasn't a tree really over there to hang the phone. So to make a long story short, we would love to hang the tree in memory of subway, or excuse me, not in the tree, in the telephone, not in the tree, just around the corner, which is where the location that you see there circle, basically, you walk back here, underneath the dragon side, go down the hill there, just before the Poly and Trail, that's the very old tree. So we wanted to hang the telephone, I haven't really told you what the concept of the telephone is for. Basically, a phone for people to call lost loved ones and, you know, say things they haven't been able to say, that they would like. And I recently, actually about three years ago, learned about the telephone, the way it originated in Japan after the tsunami in twenty eleven, and we gentlemen put one up overlooking the ocean where tens of thousands of people were washed away during that tsunami. And actually, it was the telephone which used quite a bit by the community, so people just to go and haul rope and gas. So brought that concept here, put the phone up in Plymouth, so I did, would have wanted to be in Plymouth three years ago, in memory of my dad, and in essence, received some of exposure, and just people saying thank you, and, you know, wanting to share their stories of how the phone provided healing to them. So again, we'd like to take the phone, put it up, it would be our tree, more personal tree. I do have some visuals in there showing what the concept looks like in its totality because it would be the phone mounted on the dock or with a memorial plaque.
And we discussed this last year, early this year, I should say.
Yeah.
And what council approved was pretty much like a memorial token, or like a rock or something with a flag on it.
Okay.
Okay, so that's where council may have approved it now. Your presentation, maybe council's position has shifted a little bit, but usually what we're looking at from the Poly and Trail in particular is, you know, the bench, the table, we have policies for that, the transition. Really don't have all the policy and everything like that in place, however, at some point it's replaced. Chair, I have to say, it couldn't work with, you know, a building like this, and this figure, that's up, and what else can actually. So you may have the anarchy, if we can, if we can go on, work, or something like that. So I'm just going to let council expand on their positions and see where this goes.
Yeah, great.
Secretary of General.
As part of the first consideration of what we talked about, we saw the memorial, which our chair just referred to, the council, it was also proposed, the wind phone was part of the consideration. And at that time, it was felt that maybe we don't want to put the turkey for the horse. At that time, it sounded like there was going to be a specific, in fact, we authorized a specific area of being designated for the Lady Sullivan Monument or Memorial. I don't think we have anything established. So I don't want to get in the same situation that Mr. Wright referred to, that we do it for one, we have to do it for another.
Sure.
We don't know where they're going to end up. Not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm saying that there's a proper progression here, putting a phone up without the accompanying enhancements that were approved, because that's what was brought to us. As part of that type of project, I would have a problem per se, aside from the possibility of taking them and having something passed along from person to person, from personal contact, and that's just the reality of where we live right now. But I'm certainly open to hearing other opinions.
Can you say something about Oxford? That you're the Oxford for the four students that were, you know?
Yeah, so I, I think in order, you should start, you know, because our rails and rules are understanding, you know, listening to the concept. So we definitely want to follow what is necessary for the community. As I mentioned, the people are reaching out to me consistently, and I have received a lot of people from Oxford asking about something, like being put up on the trail for the community. So I understand there's some policies that have to follow with this, so if we can, you know, I'm up for options or, you know, different ways that we could approach this, I think it could be asking for, I think we've sent you some of the requests that have come my way, because I ran into the telephone with that kind of website, and so I did request them all over the country for people to put up phones. And basically, this is like a protection project, I just help acquire phones, help assemble, get approval to hang the phone in the parks and in the different areas, so
Is that a rotary phone?
It is.
I'm just going to say, my son, you'll never know how.
Yeah, I had to purchase a couple of Facebook Marketplace and then take out the entire of it, because they're very heavy.
That one like this from the party line, I remember.
So a lot of us did. So, a lot of us did.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, if, if there, is there any other questions or any other thoughts or, you know, if something?
There was a lot of, most problems here, just still, Randy, uh?
Uh, yes, and like I mentioned about the previously approved location and all of that, location, an acceptable location from the previous memorial area, or was that not, you were involved in that, was that a different entity?
So, uh, I was involved in it originally, and I helped with facilitating the invitation for the, 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 um, event that happened here. But I don't know, it started like the papers and the different things that were going to be placed in that area, or what happened.
And the reason I bring that up is I wondered if that was approved and you did do something there, I think it kinda, it maybe does be part of that, and so it's, it's following that similar approval, and that would, I kinda thought it hurt maybe.
Well, you know, I'm gonna speak for myself. We're looking at, this doesn't become, uh, gateway to more items on the trail that, you know, we're coming, you know, there's a motion filled with this, this request, in the audience and something like that. If council wants us to go through, right, you can come with the location that it's at, you know, what, what, uh, if a matter of this comes up or something. I mean, we'll be open to that as well. So, that's, you know, we really want to be cognizant of, uh, council motion.
I think you have some very good points on that. And the other concern I would have is that when I went through the package, those are affixed to the tree. Uh, I would really not want markers into the tree, possibly on a post, but that would go along with the designated area. If there was a dedicated post, that phone might be put on. And, uh, emphasize that with the area, that that would be something that could happen.
Yeah, it's, uh, the option that you just mentioned, you can put it on a tree, which the tree when that, you could put it on a post. Uh, there's even the, some locations that actually put up a rainfall booth and, uh...
Yes, I pulled it up, you know, a lot of pictures.
Oh, you looked it up, okay. So, yes, there's, there's a lot of options, so that's something like along those lines, you know, not necessarily put on the tree would work. We can figure that out.
Are you, are you locked into the two locations you presented, like this? Are you going to replace?
No, because, uh, we watched it, like, following and just was looking for places that we could go and then, you know, presented, slipped around, so, whatever. If you can come up with anything, and even, I know that one location went out up there. I think, I still did look at all the flowers, that was the bench is going, um, is there something in that area and we could do it? We could do it. You know, whatever you guys come up with.
Counselor Noel? I'm gonna ask Linda, I don't mean to put you on the spot. You have a lot of communication with a lot of people. What other types of things like this have you been hearing that could potentially come to the trail, if any?
Ghost nights, we're riding through the Lost River lines, red night, we've had that. Um, had, uh, spooky events that are seasonal, you know, they would put ghosts, find the ghosts on the trail for a seasonal event. Uh, there's, there's been a couple of other, um, compost boxes for those ways. You know, a couple of different things like that which have been floated down, but just, you know, just like.
Counselor Pearson?
I would just say that we deal with the same issues in our cemetery. Everybody wants to put something into our cemetery, and, um, they want mobiles, sometimes they want flowers, they want, uh, handmade memorials. Um, we, you know, we dealt with these things before, and sometimes it's hard to say no to people, but after a while, we finally got to the point where we had to say no because it was, um, taking our maintenance people to clean up all the messes, and I'm worried about the, about the, um, damage that, you know, we do have, um, you know, what we call malicious destruction of property on the trail, and I'm worried that this will be just another thing that would end up, because I don't think the kids would understand what it's there really for, and sometimes they just destroy stuff to, to do the damage.
Yes.
And I, and we do have this problem in our cemetery, it's the same type of an issue, and, um, at, at one point, we had said yes, and then we realized that we had made a mistake and had to backtrack a little bit, so, um, I just wanted to bring that to our board's attention.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why we put in order, it's a place, people are putting the, putting the memorial for the whole place, I think. I suppose, if you want help. Vice Chair Brinkfield?
My wife and I were in Kentucky and we were walking on this trail. There was a young, young lady that had gotten killed by accident, and what the people on the trail did, and was really, really gaudy. It was a shrine to this girl with solar lights that stayed on all the time with the plastic flowers. We kind of felt spooked, if you will, and I, I didn't, I think that putting a shrine on a, a ghost home might not be in what power per day, if you put, uh, our ordinance would not call it, but I think a bench, nice bench would be with a, with a plaque on it. But a ghost home, I don't know if that would fit our agenda.
You send it along the highway. Maybe go to other states, there are memorials all along, uh, that's highway. I don't think we actually allow them here, but you do see them, you know, and after a while, they become a disrepair, and that, they don't look so nice anymore.
Yeah, I can appreciate that we have to keep order, so the Polyent Trail is beautiful, and if this is not the right location, we can definitely hire another. Uh, the phone that I put up in my father's, his number was, it's been there for years, and the community needs care of it. It's not in any way about, you know, vandalized or, nor do you take it down, it's simply put up by a string, on a tree. So, people take care of it. So, I, I understand, the Polyent Trail is not the right location, but the community is asking for it, and so, you know, I don't think any of you, I'm sure you're all impacted in many ways, if you have another idea for a location, uh, it, I think, the phone, not I think, I know the phone, and the concept of the telephone with the wind has helped so many people feel, and the past few years have been significantly helped for many people. So, I'll, um, if I go to the memorial, it's, uh...
There's, uh, you know, you might play one-way jobs in municipalities, I've worked for some, Polyent Trail, one, one, prior location, maybe get one-on-one.
The municipalities?
Yeah, Oxford, Lorraine, Anderson, other, which Oxford. You believe in the schools, maybe, Oxford, I guess, you might go to it and, and, uh... Secretary McDonnell?
Could make the point again that I think this is an interesting and sound idea, no pun intended, but short of having a designated area that's been authorized by the council previously, we see no activity on it by the volunteers that indicated they were gonna take, do it, take care of it, I think that would be a proper location, subject, of course, to the fact that we don't allow anybody to put anything on trees. If you look at the scout projects and everything up and down the trail, they have to put their own poles up, uh, bad houses, the same story, so, I, we're restricted in how much latitude we can give people to do on the trail, but I think if, if, just a suggestion or a thought, if you followed up with the original organizers that, that got this approval and see where they're going, or if they're going anywhere with it, then that will give some basis for making a decision on whether you want to pick up and check the source or is, you know, move forward with it, but having a solitary item literally isn't consistent with the way we do things.
Yes, I see, I understand, yeah, thank you. Um, is there any sort of the, you said the ordinance, uh, that they had trees, is there somewhere, I'd hope to look at those ordinances and see, you know, what they are, what's possible?
No, not per se, the Polyent Trail is basically, portions of it belong to Oregon Township, DNR, et cetera, so, so, it would vary, but because we manage the entire Polyent Trail, it has been the policy of the trail not to allow things to be put in trees or on trees. Um, and we've had some, you know, it's a great idea, we love getting the birdhouses and bath, bathroom houses and everything, owl houses, we have owl houses, but they're all on their own individual form, they're not allowed to be attached to a tree.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate your time and your feedback, and, uh, if any of you want to reach out to me and do think of a location, active today, uh, you can go to the telephone with the wind dot com, I just sent you an email. So, thank you again for your consideration, and, uh, thanks, Linda, for your help and getting us here.
It will be in touch with David, so.
Yeah, I will, we will follow up.
Yeah, so, we're working with him, but he's kind of like gone to Florida.
Oh, he's kind of down to Florida. All right, thank you all.
Should I get that other back?
Oh, I'm gonna keep it in the, oh, we're done. There you go. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll run our agenda and then see proclamation of our image of the back of Steel. Uh, that was come up with one, where it's, I have been elected, so we're going to state House of Representatives, uh, District, uh, and, uh, as well, mention of her time and efforts on the Polyent Trail. We have, uh, made a plaque, we're on it here, show this to the camera, one zooming on there. See that, uh, so, what, the State of Michigan, one of the former Polyent Trail sites cut out of it, proclamation, and you're just seeing on the bottom, this is what is presented by Donnie Steele, who is for the leadership, also serving as a member of the Polyent Trail Leadership Council. Donnie has demonstrated the highest regard and her stewardship of the Polyent Trail to council, which is her best continued success in her service to the public. So, to congratulate Mrs. Donnie for her effort here, and we wish her the best on, uh, representing State Michigan. Do you think council further wants to tell the camera or Donnie? Okay, if not, uh, Linda, you'll see that against us?
I will, I will.
Okay. Linda, thank you too for, uh, arranging this, giving us, uh, great, great, great ads.
Great minds work together, Kate.
One small, like, side. Yeah, sure.
If Donnie ever comes back to the Polyent Trail, I'd like to ask her manager not to beg for the plaque back like she has done other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Retire, you get a plaque, unretired, you get a plaque back.
So, that long, though?
It's right.
No, it's not giving it, council's got the spike on it.
All right, item nine D, twenty-twenty-two budget amendments. Council packet is the twenty-twenty-two final budget that's been prepared. Uh, I since passed out an updated sheet, the council packet being twenty-twenty-two beginning of the fund balance was incorrect, short of, I don't know, six thousand dollars. So, the sheet that's correct is a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, it's in the bottom of the budget sheet. Uh, helpful highlights on this budget, I'm not open to the floor for anything that really needs to be discussed. Uh, you see fund balance, the balance, the budget is twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, probably mostly open to fund balance, a while, uh, contributions are, are received, others in kind, uh, contributions, such as the negative twenty-three ninety-five there, money's in, uh, going down. Uh, as far as interest donations and miscellaneous income, I increased the interest in the savings account because that amount, eight eighty-five, eighty-four, is only through October. It seems like our monies are gonna be able to reach that thousand dollars, like, compared to here. I love the donations and miscellaneous income, the same, not more, but, you know, it's on that. And then you'll see the Polyent Trail here. This is the combination of thirty thousand from Anderson Township, eighty, fifty thousand from Oxford Township, and a few other, uh, grant monies that have been allocated into the line of, on the, on the BSM report. So, all total, that's a hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars of revenue. Uh, on the expense side, uh, major differences, as you'll see, is the services professional, budget at three thousand, amendment at seventy-five hundred. The reason why is we spent four thousand, and we got a three thousand dollar bill from OJ, um, to come in, uh, service with rich analysis. Uh, going down further, um, you'll see meetings and rounds, project number twelve, we spent twenty-six, and I just broke that up, seventeen thousand, nine ninety-nine sixty-seven, just short of thirty thousand dollars, that's a plot number of the thousand dollars, you know, for the sets, you know. Uh, other items is equipment and hardware, three dollars, fifty-five hundred, and, uh, pretty much the rest is pretty much worth, uh, the note line item, the expenditures, this is the exact eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars, that will float in the fund balance because it hasn't been used, and then on the bottom, you'll see that eighty-eight dollar, ninety-three added into our fund balance. I did include a sheet on the, in the packet indicating that we'll want to be one of the five things with that money, and I chose the assigned category in that because that allows us to actually pull the money back out if, if needed. So, there are all those options for council, one way to, undesignated, and just put the whole, you know, into undesignated fund balance, but as far as I know, those monies were here on my floor, we seem to already put this on the trail. So, that'll, we'll be able to count and share in the public, see the writers or something to write down this time. Secretary McDonnell?
I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the Polyent Trail Management Council twenty-twenty-two amended budget with revenues and expenditures balancing, balancing at one hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen thousand.
I'll second, will you? Okay, we're watching by Secretary McDonnell, watching by Secretary McDonnell, second by Counselor Pearson, who's the budget, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Any further questions, candidates? If not, Secretary McDonnell, we'll call it over, please.
Yes, a motion to approve the amended, uh, amendments to the Polyent Trail budget. Uh, Jonathan Noel?
Yes.
Mike McDonald, yes. Joe Mador?
Yes.
Ed Brinkfield?
Yes.
Bruce Pearson?
Yes.
Curtis Wright?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right. Okay, onto, uh, appointment of officers, item nine D. Uh, every year at this time, the council meets, select their, their official officials, because of all that, for the upcoming year. So, up for, uh, appointment of chairperson, vice chairperson, secretary, and treasurer, uh, I'll leave the council the option of, I mean, for separate motions or, uh, can motion, you fill out a plan, so...
I'm going to make a motion that we continue on with the same, um, board that we have right now, the chairperson, vice chairperson, secretary, and treasurer, because they're doing an excellent job.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, a motion by, uh, Counselor, second by Counselor Mador, approve the officers as, uh, are already serving. Uh, from the, from the board, though, our treasurer, who might be, uh, along in twenty-twenty-three, so you're gonna have to appoint new treasurer. So, so we have, we have, uh, we have three other candidates right now, one, two, three, so, one.
I'm going to amend that and have Ed Brinkfield, I'm sitting on, uh, under all, I can't even count.
He's already the vice chair.
But, Bruce, uh, Bruce, um, sometimes spends money, uh, for time in Florida.
You know, Bruce is the only one that can squeeze water out of a rock and add it to the council. He knows how to do it.
Okay, see, you have, you have the choice of second couns, Counselor Noel, Counselor Harrison, Counselor slash Counselor Mador, and what you can do is, is, uh, award the incoming person for one, don't you ask? And what we could do is, is award the incoming person for one, she has taken that position off of the faculty.
God, Kim Urbanowski is the true, I don't know if it's permanent appointment, but I know she's still here.
I get you.
Well, she's already appointed, and Jim, you're not remembering the terms here. But I'm gonna point to the board. My understanding is yes, but I don't know if she's taken-
She's not here, see, that's what happens when you're not here, is you gotta point her to there.
I would, I would do a great point voice on this very good.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do this, let's take a vote on the first motion and recommend it to vote that down, no way you want to amend your motion. All right, so let's do that. So Secretary McDowell, will you call it all on that motion?
I'm the motion to appoint the current people that are filling the chaired positions for administration of the Polyant Trail. Mike McDonald, yes. Carter Bill, Joe Mador, Ed Rayfield?
No.
Bruce Pearson?
This is from right now.
So the original motion, the original motion, it's a point Danny Steele has scheduled.
Oh, okay, well, that's a no there, that is like a no small there.
Okay, so, Curtis Wright?
Yes, no, Kam Yakar.
Jonathan Noel.
No.
So motion to favor.
Now you can create a motion as if it never happened. Okay, uh, Counselor Moll.
I just wanna clarify that my status is an alternate, I don't think I'm eligible. I, the only time I have voting rights is when I'm here at Ed's office. Can I clarify, right?
We can all rule that.
Let's start by, you guys, I did those dialogues in 2020.
So, to discuss this, if, if you're a-
You're a off then.
It's in the files. So if the person is not present, can you assume the role that has the treasurer? At that meeting?
It's not, it's, it's that I have all voting rights as regular can, to be remembered. So yes, if Alison Kemp, if Alison Kemp was a treasurer, if Alison Kemp was a treasurer and I showed up, there's a question, could I, would I be the treasurer in her absence? No, I don't think you would be. Yeah, that, that's typically not.
Okay, so, so basically we have Counselor Noel, Counselor Pearson, Counselor Cal, and-
Chief Director.
To fill the role as treasurer, which is really minor role, in my opinion, because treasurer is carrying the load of all the employees and then it turned to, to, to management and so, basically, it's, it's a named title in most parts, because P N directly, that treasurer should be the one doing, doing the items that management and running is bringing to treasurer. That's the purpose of it.
Are they on the account? Making account?
They-
I don't think so.
I don't.
The treasurer, the treasurer of the Polyant Trail, I don't think so.
Just Joe?
Just Joe.
That's where it began, the $1,100 one.
What, present?
In order, I'd say we have given our monies later.
What?
I don't wanna say I have to do this, but-
I'll make a, a new motion that the three members on the board to continue in their positions and then I will volunteer if somebody else had the motion for me to be the treasurer.
You can pull it, you can have it.
I'll, I'll do the treasurer's.
Okay, so we, we have motion from, from Counselor Pearson, second, from Vice Chair Rayfield to appoint Curtis Wright as chairperson and Rayfield as vice chairperson, Mike McDonald, Secretary Bruce Pearson as treasurer of the Polyant Trail, our names in council 2023. No further discussion. Okay, hearing that, why don't we do a roll call? Secretary McCall?
For the appointment of the big representatives on the Polyant Trail to the administrative posts. Ed Rayfield?
Yes.
Bruce Pearson?
Yes.
Curtis Wright?
Yes.
Jonathan Noel?
Yes.
Mike McDonald, yes. Joe Mador?
Yes.
Motion.
All right.
You might get, you might get payments, seashells or something, but I'm not here.
Well, we'll take them. Last and last, we get chummed up, is the meeting scheduled for 2023. Uh, for council members, pretty much all you're seeing is the same, same schedule, same locations, different dates. 3:00 PM is still good for council?
I know it's tough on, it's Kemp now with her job, but just put Melzer, that's why she's on the agenda, is for council, her schedule.
So, so really, the only change is one night, one, if you want to meet 12 times a year, end of July. Although that is, is the same as years past.
If we made it 12 times, we can always, the meeting before that is June, we could say we would like to make motion that we cancel July meeting, right?
Yeah.
Or we could also call us, per call meeting.
Or you could call meeting.
Some of my, that's good, there's a vacation if they think the other's commitment, that it gets turned down if you raise someone.
But appears to be more of a purpose, purpose of life than that, July and actually you can have some of it because of holidays.
Linda, do we need a meeting in July?
No, we really don't.
In that case, I'd like to move to approve the Polyant Trail Management Council 2023 being scheduled, as presented.
Second.
Good. Motion by Vice Chair Rayfield, second by Counselor Moll, approve 2023 Polyant Management Council being scheduled ahead of December. Further all favors, sitting in front of saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Onto public comment, no politicians present here, so we're gonna talk some other comments. So we will, Ms. Mador.
Merry Christmas everybody, my pleasure when you come to meetings, you do a great job.
Counselor Pearson.
Merry Christmas also and I think we're gonna have a snowstorm, so be prepared this week, all I have to say.
Secretary McDowell.
I'll bear the thoughts of, wishing everybody a safe, healthy and happy new year and merry Christmas and thank you very much for all the work we done together this year, because it's been a good year for the trail. It was an expensive year for the trail, but it was a good year for the trail.
Counselor Moll.
I'd like to say, happy holidays to everybody, thank you, Donnie, for your years of experience here and dedication she, she used in helping the trail.
Absolutely.
Vice Chair Rayfield.
I would like to say that the last meeting, Donnie came up to me and he said, I hope you're doing the prayers, please keep them going, don't let prayers stop. That tells you a little bit about Donnie. And you guys have a Merry Christmas, watch out for bad weather, be careful tomorrow, this end of the week. And also pray for those people in Peru that can't get out. We were blessed, we got our trail manager back with real hands and needles. Thank you.
Kevin, anything for 2022?
Just happy holidays to all and I'd like to report I won't be here after January meeting.
Okay. Not going to Peru, are you?
No.
Okay.
I don't know who's going to Peru for the next eight years.
Merry Christmas.
Trail Manager Ryan.
Well, I'd like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and thanks to the council for one heck of a year. We got a lot worked done, we're headed in a really good direction and I think next year is gonna be another bang up here. We're gonna get more and better from that trail, so hopefully.
Do you over?
Do over, right here.
Stop by and do over, I just want to add, to me, the building I'm back, I'm talking about that, like the uses and, and we're happy that she's there. At our workshop meeting, I took the council members who had never been in the building a few weeks ago, walked in the building one evening, checked all the areas out, never impressed. They're always in this, hearing this idea of how bad that building is, it should be torn down, and it's not that bad. Kind of like we, yes, a couple things here and there, but they were all very thrilled. They wanted all support continuation of the use, that are being used there for the community, they want continuation, they want, they're tasking the getting numbers to maybe screw stuff, make it look nicer. They saw a couple of that captured stuff out there and they're just happy to be able to help that community and all some other things, so that will continue and it will get better.
Yeah, I think all of that, council appreciates the place to store, right? It's, it's the back of the world.
Yeah, I think it, it's a great location out of Linda and I said, four of our five council members had never been in the building, so we took a tour out there one evening and went all through it and they were all very happy and supportive of the one. Congratulations.
Yeah, something like this going forward, Linda, Linda is definitely loving to have bottles of ice, so that's probably forthcoming on, on our job in March. January meeting, Keith Potter will be here to go over the transfer renewal, if you have any questions. Sorry, request again to be here at council meeting, so just, on that, and see what else you want to talk about. Well, probably nothing more, says everybody said, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, we have a good year. We'll retain the most to return from, second, from Vice Chair Rayfield and second, from Counselor Pearson, further discussion after that. My favorite is to see the pot to say aye.
Aye.